Okay, good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome to the City of West Point work session for January 5th, 2023. I'd like to call the work session to order. I'll begin by reviewing the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Second, any opposed? Public comment tonight is the first thing on our agenda here. The mayor and city council welcome any public comment at this time. I'm sorry, y'all. New Year, I'm already... Let me review the agenda. Tonight, we have new business. We have the city manager's update. We have the 2023 board and committee appointments. We have the 2023 city officers. We have the qualifying fees for the 2023 municipal election. And we have the memorandum of understanding for Mobus Alabama LLC. Those are the items on our agenda tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Seven minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? All right, public comment. Tonight, the mayor and city council welcomes any public comments at this time. This portion of the meeting is for comments from citizens on any city issue, not for questions or debate. If you have any questions, you will find contact information for all council members on the city website, or you may contact city hall staff. Thank you for attending our council meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to make any public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll close that session. We'll begin with the new business, and we'll start with the city manager's update.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a few items tonight. Number one, I think everybody is fully aware of the weather that we've had recently, the highs, lows, storms, cold weather. And I think it's a good opportunity to thank our employees that go out in this kind of weather and take care of the utilities and public works and fire police, everybody that responds to emergencies. Specifically, our utility infrastructure, I think, held up very well, which again shows that our employees are out there doing good work and maintaining our systems and having us prepared for those kind of situations. Because, you know, in many areas, there were massive water leaks and power outages and all those things, and we fared very well. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of those employees. Second item is, over the last few months, we've seen a good improvement in the AMWAST service. Now, I know that some will say if it affects them directly, you know, I didn't see a change. But for the most part, we're seeing a decrease in the number of, you know, missed collections and those type things. They're responding well, and when we do have a missed collection, to get back and get those taken care of. We've had some, I think, more recycle issues, and we've had some backdoor pickup issues. But again, as far as the numbers go, they're down dramatically. So I think they are doing what they have said they would do. They're making effort to improve that service. The last item that I have is really just for information more than anything else. But as y'all know, every day, five days a week, we have customer service here at city hall from eight to five. They have direct numbers to the three customer service people we have is 706-645-3503, 3504, and 3505. And then we have a main number, which is 706-645-2226. That number is automated. So if you call that number, it'll go, it gives you a selection to choose to depart. That's our daytime answering system. In the afternoons at five o'clock, and that rolls over to IUC, which is a service that we contract with to answer all of our calls. So five o'clock and after, they answer all those lines. If you call those customer service lines, they roll over to IUC. And they're just like an operator here. They dispatch whoever needs to be dispatched, or it gives you information, an after-hours police number if it's, you know, something that's not an emergency, or they tell you to call 911 if it is an emergency. So our process is that that's the way generally we operate. Call during the day, you'll get the city hall number, they'll dispatch somebody. Call after hours, IUC will dispatch one of our staff that's on call. I know that y'all are fully aware that many times after hours, y'all get calls, even during the day you get calls. Say, I've got, there's a water leak, or my water main's busted, or whatever it may be. And, you know, y'all in turn will call and make sure that that item gets taken care of. It's helpful if we have a customer call customer service, especially after hours. During the day, generally, you're not going to call me, or you're not going to call Sammy, or Rodrick if there's a pothole or whatever. You know, you're going to call customer service. But after hours, that helps because I'm going to do this. If you call me, then all I'm going to do is turn and call IUC and get them to dispatch, because I don't know who's on call. I don't have that information. So it just will help the process and also document it in a work order and those type things. So we just encourage the citizens, and those numbers are on our website, for them to call anytime. If they call here to city hall, they'll get transferred to that after-hours number. So all they need to do is exactly what they would do if it was between eight to five. Call that number anytime, and you should get service. I'm saying, we have that question quite often, and people don't know who to call. You can always call those numbers here for customer service, and you should get directed to the right person to help you. Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
With regard to several things you mentioned, customer calls, I don't have a call until, I mean, unless somebody calls me and says they're having trouble following that maze of, you know, call this number and call somebody else, or can't get an answer, or whatever. Sometimes it's after hours, sometimes it's not. But, you know, I try to do what I can to help facilitate the resolution to a problem. And I know you're not talking to me about all of this, but just I'm speaking in general terms. You know, I think all of us want to do what we can to help citizens, you know, address their issues within the city services. So, you know, I always ask questions, have you contacted, have you tried to contact? And usually what I hear is I'm not getting a response, or I, you know, can't get through, or something. Whether it's true or not, I don't try to get into that. I just try to move the process. So I think we're going to have some of that go ongoing. We all need to be aware of all of what you're telling us, obviously. But we're going to have some of that if we continue to be focused on getting an answer to citizens. I personally know that, you know, on a day before a holiday, or, you know, if it's Friday and 15 minutes before time to go, you know, you might let everybody go. But that 2226 number, I had personal experience with that last week. And I did call you about that, and thank you for kind of facilitating what I needed to do. And I was able to talk to Richard and get things addressed, or at least get some directive on it. But that's not during, that's not after hours. That's during hours that we are supposed, that we advertise that we're open. And while I, you know, I appreciate you don't let your staff go, you know, and we had somebody here to catch those calls. But those kinds of things are going to happen, and it just sort of leaves a... Happened with me. I understand now why. But I don't think we want those kinds of impressions left with the person that's calling. For whatever reason, they're calling on the day before a holiday, or in the last hour of the day, it is still during business hours. So I just say that for whatever it's worth. There were a couple of things. AMWAST. I'm so glad that the numbers are showing some improvement. From a personal perspective, couldn't be worse. And I'm still getting a lot of complaints from other people, especially to your point, about recycling. So there's still more work to be done there.
Right.
And kudos to all the people who helped addressing the weather and all that comes with that. And I didn't get complaints about, you know, power outages and those kinds of things. I'm sure there were probably some. Some of you all may have gotten some. But I think we do have a great staff that stays on top of trying to get it back on and minimize the inconvenience. So thank all of you for that.
Anybody else? All right. Well, stay there, because we're going to talk, calling you for the board and committee appointments.
Next on the agenda. Right, so the board committee appointments for next year. So there will be, beginning in March, there'll be two appointments. We actually could make one of those sooner. We have a vacant position there. But if not by March, we would love to have two appointments for the Board of Adjustments. There'll be two appointments for the Hawks Library also in March. And there will be two appointments to the Municipal Planning Board also in March. In the October meeting, we will have an appointment to the West Point Historic Preservation Commission. And then in December, we'll have an appointment to the West Point Development Authority. And as always, we'll put those out there. They'll be advertised for people to know when those positions are open. And we'll hope to get some advocates. And certainly, we certainly want to consider those that are already serving if they apply as well. So those are the appointments that are scheduled for the 2023 calendar year.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to report, one thing that you didn't mention in your report, and I was just kind of responding to things that you commented on. But one thing that I intended to ask about is, what's the process for, or how should it happen that deliveries to businesses downtown where there's an 18-wheeler that blocks the street? Or an unreasonable amount of time? You know, you know, streets are narrow, and there's not much room for a big truck to park. I mean, they can park in the middle of the street, and people can go around on Third Avenue. But on some of these other little streets, if they're there and they're blocked, and you pull up behind them, and especially if somebody gets behind you, you just got to wait, and wait, and wait, and wait, and wait. So is there anything that can be done to address the health bridge gate entrance to their parking area? Oftentimes, for long periods of time, not accessible. So as a city merchant, I'm a city business. I don't know if others are having that problem, but I continue to hear about how...
Is that being reported whenever it occurs? Are they calling and asking for assistance?
I think it was called, it was a call made recently, within the last week or so. I don't know if every time.
They should call every time if it's been extended.
What should happen? I mean, if you know what to expect, that there's no plan?
Well, number one, in a downtown area like we have in West Point, like any small downtown area, you're going to have delivery trucks that are going to inconvenience people for sure. If it's causing a problem with the operation of the business, or some factor like that, then we certainly need to know about that so we can communicate with the company that is making that delivery and see if something else can be worked out. So we can certainly help facilitate a conversation around that, but we need to be notified when those things are occurring so that we can address it.
So in that instance, is there a reason why a truck couldn't pull into the pull-off of that street there into the parking area behind the restaurants?
Again, I think that's a conversation that we need to have whenever there's an issue that's occurring to see if we can't come up with a, help facilitate another solution. No, I mean, that's, that's, that would be private property they'd be pulling onto there. So certainly, whoever owns that property can make, should certainly make a complaint on the delivery truck pulling on private property. The others on city right-of-way. So I don't know that we would necessarily be as involved. And certainly, probably could facilitate, hey, you go park on this private property to make your delivery, not on city right-of-way.
So the parking that seems to be public, it's nothing to keep anybody from pulling in there, is not public. It's private?
That's right.
Okay. So then that's the same situation that the business has, is private property. They don't want to be blocked.
Well, they're just blocking the gate, but I think the vehicle's probably parked on the right-of-way.
Right. But I'm saying it's access to your property is the concern here.
Sure.
So the option now is the street, basically. There's nothing that can be done to divert that traffic from parking on the street?
I think we just have to address that with the delivery, where they're going, and let us just take care of that whenever it occurs. But we certainly need to be called by the complaint so that we can work on.
And is there a length of time that you think might be reasonable? I mean, you know, I don't think anybody's going to make an issue about this and that, or whatever. But when it is extended, I think that's kind of the issue here. It's like you might be waiting, 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 and nobody ever comes out. It's not like dropping something off, coming back out, moving your truck.
I mean, we just have to facilitate that conversation.
Okay. All right, I'll pass that on.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is the 2023 city officers. The January 9th, Monday night meeting will be voting on a mayor pro temp, appointing a city attorney, and the municipal court staff. And all the current staff from the municipal court are willing to continue in the current position. Any questions or comments regarding that? All right, next is the qualifying fees for the 2023 municipal election. Mr. McCoy, would you please update us on that?
Yes, sir. Y'all should have a resolution in your packet. And basically, what it is, that state law requires that the governing body of municipalities to set the qualifying fees each year, no later than February 1st for the general election that's going to be held that year. The qualifying fees for each officer to be filled in the upcoming election, and the state law states that it shall be 3% of the total gross salary of the office paid in the preceding year, calendar year. So this year, we will have three council members that will be up, seats that will be up for election. And the qualifying fee for the council members will be $151.20. And the mayor's seat would also be up this year, and the qualifying fee for him is going to be $214.20. This resolution will be on the next agenda for your all's consideration. Do we have any questions about the upcoming election? The seats that's going to be available, that might be, would be the mayor's seat, Steve Tremel, council member Gerald Letbetter, council member Sandra Thornton, and DeeDee Williams. That's it?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
At what point do we address the period of qualifying, qualification period? I know we made, it seemed like there's been some changes made in previous years. It used to be a week last time, I think.
We made, the last several elections, the qualifying has been three days. State law says it has to be three consecutive days. So it would be, should be August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
And is that communicated how?
It will be advertised. All of this is outlined by state law as far as notifications and putting it in the paper and letting people know. But right now, this is the first step to make sure that we announce the qualifying fees on the dates.
Right. I realize that it's sort of governed, but it gives you some leeway. So we used to do five. We shortened it to three.
No, we've been doing three the last couple of elections.
Right. It's been five. It has been five. Anyway, my point is, we want as many people that are interested to qualify. And have, you know, this three, we just need to make sure that if we want to shorten it to three, let's make sure that we advertise it well so that people aren't thinking as long as it is.
We will.
All right, thank you.
Put four K R F and get that done.
Okay. My next question, early voting. That always comes up as well. And the rule is, or the agreement that I think everybody's had with the elections board, is that we will, they will not provide early voting in a city election, but it would be our responsibility to do that. At what point do we have discussion about the pros and cons of that?
Okay, early voting. Again, early voting in a municipal election always have been a responsibility of the city. And we've always had. But it could be controversial is when we have a general election that's not a municipal election, which county is responsible for that. So the counties decide whether or not they're going to have early voting, and where those early voting will take place. But in a municipal election, we've always had early voting, and it would be at, over here at OG Skinner. The dates, I would have to give you the dates, but we've always had early voting for the municipal election. The election that the city, your body, our body, is responsible for.
Okay. So the answer to the question is, we are going to do it. We're going to pay for it. This, you know, and I like to talk about things on the front end, not after the fact. After the decision's been made, has been published, that, you know, this is the way it's going to be. So...
Again, it's always had been. We've always had early...
We're going to do it. We're going to pay for it. And this chain of forwarding and all of that, I mean, it's something that we need to provide.
That's never been the case before the municipal election. The city have always paid for early elections, for the municipal election. That's what, and I think, again, the controversy always comes when it's an election that's held by the county. That's the county is responsible for. But the city elections, we've always had early voting in the City of West Point. And that's the contract with the county is for us to have early voting in the City of West Point.
We have had the comment that it costs us x number of dollars, and we don't take advantage of it.
That comment was for, from, coming from the county as far as the elections.
What it costs us to provide in municipal election. Yes, it's expensive because a lot of people don't use it. But for the people who use it, we need to provide that service. That's my other point. That's the argument. And that's it. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, anybody else? All right, thank you. Next is the memorandum of understanding with Mobus Alabama LLC.
You have a loose memorandum of understanding. There were a couple of changes made. The one you had in your packet and the one that I provided to you today. The two changes were Mobus, their official corporate name is Mobus Alabama, not Mobus Georgia. That was in the initial one that we sent out. And the pilot program will begin in 2024, not 2023. So those are the two changes. This project has been ongoing. The state was involved in this project as far as working through the process of it locating here in West Point in Georgia. It is an expansion of an existing facility. However, they were looking at doing that project in a couple of other locations. The total investment of the project's $94,600,000, and they will create 60 new jobs. It is under the Truitt County Pilot Program. It applies for a seven-year pilot. And the company will receive a 50% reduction on real property tax during, from that 2024 to 2030 period based on the, based on pilot. Again, all of this is in the memorandum of understanding. The West Point Development Authority has already approved memorandum. Those changes will be made, and they will, they'll update their approval on that to include those two changes that I discussed on the memorandum. I think that's the basic, there's no other incentives, there's no, there's no other fees being waived or anything like that. It's all under, under the pilot itself.
And is there, who actually has a conversation along the lines of, yes, you know, sort of the quid pro quo involved in all of this? We're going to do this if you do that. We're going to give you 50% break on your taxes, but if you'll do this. Is there anybody negotiating on behalf of the city, the development authority? In terms of, okay, you know, we go through a whole year, and we're talking about recreation and money that we don't have to do the kinds of things that we ought to be doing here as a community. Kia Parkway and resurfacing and all that goes into infrastructure that needs to be upgraded, maintained, and so forth. So of course, this is going to increase tax income by a million, I think, is what it said. But we're giving up several, several more million, you know, in exchange for the jobs. We want the jobs, obviously. But is anybody, or what kind of negotiations are going into these MOUs that would address our needs over, you know, for tax dollars?
Well, that's, that's why this is before the body tonight. This negotiation for this deal is under the Truitt County Pilot Policy. That's what they're applicable for, to receive. That's what has been agreed to. And it's up to the council to decide whether you want to participate in that or not.
But we've got, I mean, a lot of, there's the school board, there's, you know, there are a lot of entities that have to...
The tax assessor's office, they all know about the project. They've all seen the MOU. They're all in agreement that it's a good project and will bring revenue to the county, to their entities, and to the City of West Point.
It is a good project. I'm just asking the question, is anybody sitting back waiting for somebody else to open that discussion? Because, you know, I don't know what the school board would have to say about what our concerns are, you know. The development authority, you would think, should, would be keyed into all of that. But I'm just, I'm just wondering, at what point is that negotiation or that discussion being had, or is it not?
I'm not sure what discussion you're, again, the, the company has a consultant, the state has a project manager, the city has an economic development director. That's where most of the conversation about, the company requested 100% tax abatement for 10 years. I mean, so, you know...
So you negotiate it back to 50% based on, I mean, those are the kinds of things that...
The pilot policy says seven years is what they're eligible for.
Right. But it doesn't tell you what you can ask for in return. I mean, there are parameters around that in the policy. But it doesn't say you can't say, you know, these are conditions, or can we do this, or will you do this? They're getting impatient. My question is on the floor. I'd like for it to be a part of the record. I mean, I just feel obligated to ask the question. It's a valid question, I think. Okay?
Well, we're, we're doing this, competing with other counties, other cities, trying to get the same thing. So I think the reason why it gets down to the 50% is so that we can be competitive with those other states. And you just stated that we're giving up several, several million. On a 50% abatement, we're getting a million, we're giving up a million. It's not several, several million. We're still going to get a million over seven years instead of two million. So we get the project, we get the million. We don't get the project, we get zero. If we tried to get $2 million, they wouldn't be here. They'd be in South Georgia with Hyundai down there. So...
It's a gamble. They're here. They've got some roots here. To get them here, you got to be pretty aggressive, obviously. To keep them here, you don't have to be as aggressive. You know, it's the role of the die, I suppose, but you do it every day. Anyway, you know, we don't have to debate that. My concern is on the floor. And maybe all of this is being negotiated, but let's be transparent with it. Let's come forth and, you know, make sure everybody that's asked to sign off on something is, has information.
They have the MOU that you have. That's the information on the project.
And that's what prompted my question. You're the economic development director now, acting, I realize. So I thought, what more appropriate person? Because if that conversation is being had, I would think you probably would have been in those meetings. So maybe...
I'm still, I'm not clear on, you're saying we should be asking for additional something from the company? That's what you're asking me?
I think we should be looking at whether it's 50% or less than that. Eventually, I mean, yeah, you abate taxes, but eventually, you're going to taper that off. That's kind of the strategy or the mindset most...
That's kind of the strategy or the mindset of most communities.
That's true. I mean, and I, certainly you wanna negotiate as best you can for the community, and I think in this case, we have. To the mayor's point, it's a competitive project.
It is.
When the state's involved in it and they're saying it's a competitive project, they're looking at other sites. You have to be competitive with your, especially when they go across the state line and they can write them a check. So, um, you have to be cautious in, in those things. But the, as far as asking companies to give the city something outside of tax abatements or, I mean, these companies ask for waiving of all fees, permit fees. They want the city to do all kinds of additional things for them. Those are the things that you don't necessarily have to do, that you can negotiate away from as we did in this one. The only thing in this agreement is the pilot, whereas in, I think, almost every agreement we've done, we've waived all permit fees. We're not waiving permit fees in this project, so we are getting something.
So you're doing the less than maybe you'd have in the past. And it sounds like what you respond, your response is that they ask for this and they ask for that and they ask for that. My question is, what are we asking them for? You know, what?
We're asking them to come here and invest ninety-four million dollars in our community and create sixty jobs. That's what we're asking them to do.
And that's right.
All right, let's move on. Uh, the items on the business meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty PM will be the appointment of city officers, the swearing in of city attorney, establishing qualifying fees for the twenty twenty-three municipal election, and the memorandum of understanding for Mobus Alabama LLC. Tonight after the meeting, we do have an executive session for property discussion and, uh, we'll be coming back and adjourning this meeting after that. So I'm gonna, um, is there any announcements before I ask for a motion to go into executive session? Do we have any announcements, anybody?
Plans, uh, have started for our, um, annual Black History Program. So if someone has any ideas, February is just a few days away. And so, um, we need help and hopefully, uh, we can use the GM this year, Mike, and we will open it up to the public. We won't go virtual this year.
Good. All right, well, then I need a motion to go into executive session.
For who?
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right.